All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I called the meeting to order here at eight oh three A M. Committee Finance, Subcommittee. Start with a new business, which is the FY twenty six budget update.
Sure, man. I want to thank Katie Blake for her patience and her work in closing out the FY twenty five budget. There's been a lengthy conversation from June in July through August about whether or not after adjusting sort of our funding from the town to support the close up of FY twenty five. And with the gift of the override, that's a very, very incredible support mechanism financially to the town, to the community. We still felt that there were lines in our budget that needed to be reconciled from what the actual expenditures were through not only FY twenty three, FY twenty four, but also recent data points of FY twenty five. During that analysis, we felt there may be a need to reduce our staffing levels in order to provide revenue to disperse to those lines of the budget in FY twenty six in order to make sure that we were setting ourselves up for fiscal success. Given the the lack of the last two fiscal years meeting that obligation, we wanted to make sure we were stewards of the funds. So as we began to discuss whether or not we could reduce any folks, we first started with reviewing, getting a position to make sure that if there were any vacancies, we could pause those vacancies in order to save some money to put in the lines that have some deficits in them for FY twenty six. And over the course of the summer, as you can see from the list provided, we were able to identify seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy two thousand dollars worth of reductions through not filling vacancies, with the exception of a nurse position, which we are reducing. That is a real person who would lose their positions, but we are offering them a separate role than the public schools that they have access to. So the sheet that you have in front of you represents the FY twenty six operating budget realigned graph that was printed out yesterday and sent to you. As you can see in that document, we have eight point five positions and also some overtime dollars that are reducing from the budget. These positions all have tasks that they do. We have worked with our staff, our principals, our leadership team, and also have notified and discussed this issue with the Milton Educators Association, because there will be some other work that will need to happen in order to get these services delivered that these folks would normally deliver. So the good news is we feel that we're trying to meet a goal of roughly six hundred thousand dollars or more in order to feel secure that we can redistribute these funds, the lines of the budget that have so we have small deficits and have larger deficits in order to make sure that we are fiscally solvent in FY twenty six. We're also thankful that we did not have to actually terminate any employees in order to get to that dollar amount. We did have a list of potential reductions that would have resulted in us having conversations over the next two days with people who would have been very disappointed as they were probably on the list in the spring with the override coming about. And then felt grateful that their job didn't get reduced. I think we have to reduce anybody's position in August prior to school year. So avoiding that kind of reduction process was really helpful. So to go down this list where people feel comfortable by explaining each reduction, does people have questions about the reductions?
Yeah, I think walking through the reductions or any additional detail beyond what you've kind of provided here would be good.
If there's any budgetary dollar questions of lines and how we want to, you know, how we're going to utilize these funds, then ask Katie to step in and talk about that as well. The front position was vacated in June. The Director of Educational Technology is a Unit B administrative position. That role supports teachers in the classroom related to their technology use and access. It really works around power school and different types of applications that are used in our classrooms. This individual oversees the business education department, teachers at the high school, which is food service, not food service, but it's culinary, the woodshop, and also one or two business education teachers that will be absorbed by the school, its full administrative team for evaluation purposes. He also oversees two educators, one at the high school, one at the middle, who will then, they might be in that cost of giving one of them a stipend in order for them to pick up some the roles that AJ had left in his wake. There will be concern related to some of our teachers reaching out for some of that search to be delayed. It might look different, but we think that we can pause it for a year, reevaluate and decide when the position comes back for the following year. The Equity Coach was vacated in June as well. The educator who'd been with us for several years went to Boston Public Schools. That position, we're pausing. The equity work this year will focus more on hiring and retention and policy. And we felt that not filling that role would be something we could reevaluate as we talk about FY twenty seven as well. The Milton High School Team Chair, there are two team chairs at the high school and two team chairs at the middle school. We felt that we could reduce this role or not fill this role because she resigned in July and have the three chairs combined between middle and high school work together in order to overlap grades. We're really focusing on the transition grade. So one of the chairs will be an eight, nine building share. Not to make their life harder by having to move, but actually to make the families and children's life easier in order to help make the transition between eight and nine. We're looking at similar types of approaches from a service delivery model from five to six and from pre-K to K. Those decision points are really important. And the team chairs are really integral in that work. So we feel like this new model will be helpful to them. Despite the fact that they'll have more on their list of families to work with. We also have talked about potentially utilizing some administrative assistance support in the, in the high school that's existing to support any kind of paper in back of the house functions. So we think that they'll be fine. The nurse is the only individual who will be talked to today related to their position. It'll be a float nurse who currently the district has one nurse in every building. That's six. Two float nurses that go between buildings when someone's out and a nurse director. We felt that that was more a COVID level related hiring staff number and reducing the, the, one of the flows allowed us to save the salary of eighty nine thousand dollars. The asterisk is that we also have a unique one-to-one nurse need for one of us children who has medical needs that has been paid out of the contracted services budget for special education. That was a one-year contracted service agreement. So instead of this nurse losing her job, we are able to offer her that role. So if she would like to maintain employment, she has the opportunity to do so with the same pay, just in a role within the district. So whether they take that role or not is to be seen. But that would, that savings out of payroll is a real number because that salary will be taken out of the payroll. So ultimately, we'll have eight nurses, six schools, one nurse per school, one flow and one director. All of which will be reevaluated for service delivery need for FY twenty seven. We had a building sub at the preschool who was ended up leaving the district sometime in the spring and was not replaced. We feel like the preschool can utilize our daily stuff work as, as others have and as they have in the past. We had a special education position that was vacated and no longer in need at the Glover School. That position was targeted to be utilized at the high school if needed. After reviewing the class sizes of the programs at the high school and also looking at the therapeutic needs of some of the programs at the high school, we decided to maintain the Adjustment Council that was previously on this list in order to support the peers in the high school's therapeutic program that didn't have a therapist who were directly connected to them. They were using the, the Adjustment Councils that were already in the building that is looked. And we felt the distributing the students and working with them in the two programs at the high school and then working with them, that would settle the class size issue, the position we're going to add. There's like needs between the students that we are working with in that program. So that educator will have more students, but he'll have another educator within two to three periods a day. You'll have a parent professional for the remainder of the day, and those children also go out every period for inclusion opportunities. So it's never a full room in that space. But what was important for our special education service deliveries is that all of those students need some direct support that the Adjustment Council brings to them that we felt was needed. So we opted for a little bit higher class size for our special education students who are going in and out, but adding the therapeutic one. So that was the choice that we made. And that's where that position originated from the FY twenty five budget. And I'll go through them all and then we can ask any question if we keep talking. Custodians, we have two openings in the custodial ranks. And we've been going through overtime in order to pay folks to work the added types for those people. We feel like putting in two brand new custodians at a low level of pay to start initiating their start pay and then being able to reduce the overtime would be kind of an analysis we felt comfortable with. We feel like there's no need for overtime to go higher, to go lower with the fully staffed building. We haven't had fully staffed buildings in a while, so we would prefer to cut the overtime to hire two hardworking folks and only hire one position, not fill the other and maybe have the overtime get creeped into and have it maybe not be financially as clean and successful. So I want to thank Katie for doing that analysis and working through that as well. Assistant Director of Student Services, this position was vacated during twenty four, twenty five school year. This role is important to the success of our Special Education Director. After going through an interview process, we really didn't find candidates that we felt were going to be in the role that would be a good fit. So we decided to put it on pause in my hire this year. I can say that in the past two years, Danielle Wetmore, who's the Director of Student Services, the, she's responsible for our English Language Learning Program. She's responsible for guidance. She's responsible for the nurse. She was responsible for registration. She was responsible for residency. In order to support this reduction in her office or not providing her with the support that she had had maybe in the first year, because I don't think anybody's been stable in that position since she arrived. We've taken away registration from her. I am taking that work on. We're taking away residency from her. I'm taking that role on. We're providing her support through a high school and an elementary principal and assistant principal in order to provide the E L functions that she needs. And we are discussing whether or not we take the nurse director and put the nurse director under someone else. The goal is to free her up to be successful, set her up for success. As I sat with her yesterday, her department and her work that she leads from a service delivery standpoint, from the importance of the students that she works with and the teachers she works with, and from a financial perspective, is one of the most important roles we have in the district. And we wanted to be able to move as many things off our plate as we can in order to be successful. So this is a hard thing not to fill. But I'd rather fill it in a way that made the job in the department more effective, and I didn't think that was going to happen this year. The Speech Pathologist, we did an assessment of the case need. And instead of hiring a one-point-O speech person, we hired a part-time speech person. We just made that hire this, this week. So they actually were someone that we knew and didn't want to work full time. So it did happen to be the part-time job, that permanent lifestyle, and we got a very experienced capable speech pathologist. We will keep an eye on that caseload. That person will be, that will be out of the qualified. So we have an eye on everybody's building-based needs in terms of caseload, and Danielle's keeping an eye on the district wide, because sometimes speech, OT, some of the PCBA functions really should start to be distributed district-wide according to need. So no one should be getting a position like that and locking that individual into that school because they may have a year where the needs down in some school might have a higher need that, that goes year to year. So we are really clearly stating that those types of positions at district-wide, you're just, you have a homeschool, but you, you can be redistributed. The same thing for my, for our nurses for them. These are district-wide school nurses, not the Glover Nurse or the high school nurse. So we're ready to be flexible on how we deploy the resources depending on the need in the caseload. So the speech pathologist is a good example of that. Lastly, Xena Hamada brought to our attention that the French building sub that they hired actually had resigned somewhere during the school year and that those the demand for that position was low on a daily basis, that they had been using the regular school building subs in the building into the sub-process for our French program. The loss is obviously a French-speaking someone when the person happens to have it and the child happens to have it. And also, that's a great way to build a little bit of teachers of French because they're hard to find in this, this gives them a job who's beginning the, the education field and you know, scaffold them into a teaching job. So we understand that going into it, that we're missing out on a little bit of that. But we agreed to pause that as well. So the reductions that we had originally proposed were the Director of Education Technology and the Equity Coach. So we knew we were going to save roughly two hundred thousand dollars. We added the remaining vacancies. So we are reducing the payroll line in this unit A, unit B, and unit D scenario by seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars for FY twenty six budget. Those dollars will be redistributed and utilized in FY twenty six. So I think it's important for our folks to understand, we're not giving this money back. We're not reducing our budget overall budget. We need every dollar of our budget. We're actually realigning funds within our budget to make sure that we're keeping our resources where we need them most. And we just happened to get some vacancies that we can actually do that with. So this prevents anybody from losing their job. Now, there's these, the seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars will be instrumental in making sure that we can continue to respond to any needs this year and come out at the end of the year fiscally solvent, which we have to do this year. That was one of the main goals that we had. So we feel very comfortable that dollar amount moving into the fiscal year. And I open that to Katie, see if there's anything you want to add to this.
Questions? Thanks, John. Thanks, Katie. Recognize this has been a long process. Two observations. One is how much you all know about the operational impact of not following these rules? It's really good to hear and appreciate hearing how central office principals. There's a lot of burden sharing happening, like eliminating these roles is going to have cascading effects, and it sounds like folks in the district are taking on that, absorbing that after work. I had a couple of questions. So I heard like the elimination of the ed tech role results in having to give some of the site and we'll be using more daily subs in preschools for brunch and until there's one or two new custodians. I was wondering, so like these position eliminations will create some new costs. I was just wondering if this number, the seven seventy-two was the net of all of these new costs? These are baked in? Okay.
And so under the budget savings, that's why some of these numbers are rounded because in some instances we did track in and out, knowing that there would be additional there'd be the daily self costs or the second cost. So the numbers in the budget savings aren't exact because we are trying to take into account that there would be a corresponding expense and the corresponding expense at this time is an estimate.
Okay, great. And the only other question I had, so we're offering one of the nurse, one of the nurses a new role. Can you just say again? I just sort of.
Yeah, so we have a young person who needs a one-to-one all of them. And that comes out of the Special Education Budget for Contracted Service. That has already been in place. So that number is in the budget for the contracted nurse. We've been using a non-Milton Public Schools system. So we just, we terminated the contractor for now for one pause because we wanted to be able to offer our Milton Public Schools nurse that available job. And if they decide to take it, then we will. So the payroll budget will go down by the nurse's salary. And the nurse's salary will be taken and put into the contracted to contract the service line, which is already in place all of the time.
Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, and I think we talked about this a bit before. So I know with the speech pathologist and I was assumed similar to team chair, but I think the team chair is, is different. So I'll leave that apart. In looking at that, recognize when you went through and looked at all of the projected caseloads, I assume that you did that like with all of the services within the I E Ps. Is that, and then this is where we found like, given caseloads, this is where we found like with the speech, the speech pathologist that we had.
So we, we, to raise the, the lens and it's just a little higher, we went through every staffing level of every school. And a lot of those are consistent with what you would think it would be, this three first grades, this first grade teachers, this two French, two English, you know, so we, the elementary chart is coming to my brain that we have a big chart that literally is this big. And then it goes across to all of the service providers at the elementary school. The section where we have OT, PT, speech, et cetera, are all moving parts because it really is the service delivery of the I E Ps, the students in that building or across the district that we want to be to make sure that we can fulfill. We thought about reducing this position in whole because we felt there wasn't a need for that based on the number of students that they serve. And I want to give Danielle and also the building principals, the building principals know exactly who their students are, who are I E Ps, and exactly who they see and what they need and how many days a week they need. And so we feel comfortable with that caseload. That would be, that is a quality card hire. That would service the quality card Cunningham. And potentially the preschool, we tried to utilize those service delivery professionals in a way that captures all three organizations, preschool, Cunningham, quality card. But right now, we feel comfortable with that number. But remember also the bigger picture is this, this amount of money that we're trying to actively repurpose will be available for us if for some reason OT goes up and we need to hire point two or point three, or this number for speech goes up and we, we will have money in order to to respond to any variable service demands that we have during the year across the budget. So if that that comes to one where we have the need for a little bit more, we would have to let folks know we need to move that person from point five to point six. And that could happen to any position that we're looking at. And that's why being conservative and having these dollars for a side that redistribute is so important. That's how school budgets work. That's why we have bottom line authority. So you know, a bottom line authority is really great when you have a bottom line money to actually redistribute and that's what we're trying to do as well.
And I think that's where, excuse me, Danielle came and spoke with us at the end of last year and gave a presentation talking about, because I think some, I think unless you're in the world of it, you don't recognize when we talk about like variability within the budget, recognizing like building getting referred for special ed services, that, that it's not necessarily the beginning of the year is what you have, that it, it, there's this ebb and flow and that right now we don't have any cushion for any ebb and flow. And so I think it's important to realize that this, and, and that is also where we have historically had budget deficits at the end of the year. So I think that's why having this built in there, recognizing that the budget is built for the current level of, with it, special education, the current level of service that we have, of recognizing to gain this point, I think she said last March, even just at the high school, she had thirty-five students referred. That's a lot. And so that could be a huge budget impact in March. This gives us that, that cushion that's needed. I did have another question. So around the Equity Coach, I know one of the things in the past, in, in a past meeting, you referenced some changes that have been made with respect to hiring and even just sort of the platform, the true music for hiring. So to the end, as part of the end goal of having greater diversity in hiring and having a more diverse candidate.
Sure. So any one of these positions, if they weren't vacated, we probably wouldn't have, we don't know if we would have reduced them. So if the Equity Coach didn't leave, we would have kept the Equity Coach. We would have kept F A Shavers, Dr. Shavers, who's the Director of DEIB. And I Tina was in that role in Cyrus, the gentleman that made up the group. So in rethinking the department with one less person because it did become vacant and because our equity work has had many leaders over the last five years. And this is Dr. Shaver's second year. Our goal together is rightsizing her work, focusing on some concrete goals for the year that she can accomplish without having that position. And then as we get ready for FY twenty seven for, with maybe hiring that position back. And what that work would look like to your point is we met twenty brand-new teachers that are up in the library right now with their third day of orientation. And as we look at that group of twenty educators, they are all white males and females. It's just not acceptable. We need to diversify our so we were saying as we were welcoming the group and we got to present there, I said that FA, we need to take a picture so we can take a picture next year and see that this group of individuals that we bring on to the schools looks different, looks more like our community and, and has a real clear that we have a real clear intention on hiring and retaining people of color. And so our, our goal through FA's initiative this year will be, we do have a new platform for supporting hires of people of color and also retention. It's called the Teacher's Lounge. It's a nonprofit that works with students, works with teachers in the Boston area that we've already signed up for. We're going to look to have equity training for our high ground called Hiring Agents, and that's our Unit B staff and our principals in our central office staff, so we can actually be trained in how we want to look at our own bias, look at the questions that we ask, look at how we operate around the search in interview process in order to not only make sure that we look at higher pools of diverse candidates that, that should result in higher numbers of people hired than diverse. And then what are the retention issues that we have? So that's a goal. We're going to, we want to give Dr. Shaver's very targeted goals to me. Shreath the work a little bit because we do have wellness personnel department, but that does not mean that that work will continue. And as we met with the leadership team yesterday to talk about my goals, which become part of their goals, which we think communicated to the teachers on Monday. Number one is the classroom, which has room for DEIB initiatives embedded. The second goal is cultural climate in the building and the classroom, by the way, support students' families to feel safe and ready to learn. That also has DEI embedded in it. And the fiscal guard, stewardship of the dollars, which generally is our responsibility to make sure that we're ready to respond to anything. So we can, we really looked at and actually the chart at the end of the day, our five themes all had DEIB themes underneath that they were embedded into that work. So the DEIB work will happen this year. It will be intentful. It's discussed as part of our big leadership team work. It will continue.
I just appreciate the clear explanation of the work that you've done, the thorough process that you've been through, very transparent, inclusive and detail oriented and I really just appreciate, appreciate the decisive proactive steps that you're taking. So thank you for all this.
So this all started because when we, when Katie and I first met and I had watched Katie go through a challenging spring, the, the first question that we had all together was making sure that we're solvent in. And I, I want to thank Katie for being the driver of having the clarity of what the budget has in it, what the budget does not have in it, looking at every single line of the budget over and over again, and then putting in the actuals for twenty-five after resolving a very high twenty-five. So she could provide me with a comfortable level of funding that we need to reach in order to make this issue solvent. So Katie's behind-the-scenes work of the numbers itself. I don't know those numbers. I'm so thankful that Katie now has kind of her own budget to move forward as opposed to shepherding somebody else's budget and recalibrating it where needed and then taking the steps to do so. I think I'm thankful that Katie has the numbers and that we can handle that. And they're going to be variable, so we're going to have to respond to this year, but we're feeling more comfortable with the FY twenty-six budget every day. So I want to thank Katie for her work last year and moving into this year.
Yeah, and I would only add that for anybody who listens to this conversation or when you have it tonight, you're sort of wondering or feeling like this is coming out of nowhere. I just would remind them that actually what this is, is the follow-through on what Katie, you were saying all along over the past year, you were going to need to be doing. So I hope that is clear and appreciated, you know, by everybody, recognizing it's not easy, of course. You know, and these are hard decisions, but, um, that's why I'm all, you know, all the more grateful to you for just stepping up to make the decisions because that represents the follow through on the commitment that, that you made and all of us who were here, not yet made, but everyone on the school committee made that commitment. Um, so I just thank you for following through on it.
Yeah, uh, totally agree. So I just thought, like, I love the detail, which you were able to walk us through this. That's something Katie's obviously done many times with us. Not something I've seen from the superintendent. So love how in the weeds you are, given how important this is for our history every year, as you talked about, like, a stable foundation on a budget and right size that issue that's been plaguing us for two years at this point. Um, so really appreciate that. Love that we're talking about this in August, not January. Um, uh, also feels like a little bit separate from budget conversation, but all the stuff you're talking about with the DEIB department. Just really resonates to me that, that is presentation. It's great, but there was so much she was talking about and needing under her belt, like too big, ineffective, uh, feeling for one person. So I think they're right, having our biggest goals, that's like the whole staff hiring, diversity, retention, stuff is something talked about a few times, like can we get a presentation on what, what is our current state, what is our goal in terms of diversity in our, so all of that really resonates. We'd love to see some presentation from you on just, yeah, where we're at now, what, what you'll see as like our goals next, next year, next couple of years to try and re-shift all of that. Two questions on the finance piece, um, to do like, you said it well, like this is a follow up for re-casting and old people we were going to need to do at that point that goes up. It feels like the first giant step towards doing that. Is there anything else within your re-casting process that in your mind we need to be doing before we like feel really good about the next budget or this is kind of bad? Obviously track this for the quarter one report or two.
So in the quarter one report, um, I was planning on providing you information by that cost center breakdown. So it's each one of those goals and then the major departments with the salaries and expenses and just providing visibility on what our original FY twenty six budget was so that you can see those numbers. And then what the realigned budget is. And so you can see, um, a piece of that may be shifting within the lines and within the cost centers because that's the realignment piece. And all of that is going to encompass all of the changes in all the work that we've done since we originally created the budget and the budget was approved in May. And so, um, that will take into account some of these shifts. There is, um, budget transfer authorization. So that may potentially be a piece of it that the school committee would look at the changes and then collectively as a group would approve those changes just to say, okay, we know when we approved this budget last May, we approved it, we voted on it as a school committee. And we're acknowledging that those changes are present in the Q one report and we're authorizing that, we're approving that, those transfers. Um, as John had mentioned, it is the bottom line budget. So we do have the ability to make these changes as long as we meet that bottom line. And, you know, as we all know, the past two years, we haven't been able to meet that bottom line. So these shifts certainly are moving us to, to have the ability to be, um, to operate within our budget for this school year. So is that, is that helpful?
Yeah. So quarter, there will be a follow-up quarter one report or, you know, the budget reallocation. We also need to vote on this authorized, these reductions, not specifically within the scope. Confirming where the exact line items, the amounts that are going to each line item, but that we're going to reduce the salary. Since they broadly speaking, the salary line item by this amount to move over into the operating line items.
I, I would even say that maybe the vote today is more about a vote of confidence for this approach to realigning the budget and that the actual categories will be unpacked at the Q one meeting. This is more, I, I would, because technically I think the vote really has to happen in when the Q one reset is actually, so you can actually see where money went from here to here. Uh, we're showing you what we're doing in order to make that happen for Q one. I, I, I would ask is, um, as your superintendent in Katie in the district, that, that the vote today is maybe less formal, but more about a support for the work that we're doing in order to create this, to start the ball low and to reset the Q one. I think that the official vote or policy would be the Q one vote. This is more vote of confidence that this is approved, you guys are really doing, be transparent with the community type of thing.
Question, John, about?
I just want to make sure I understand the last word. So this budget, these funds will not start to be spent, right? They'll be, you, once we, once we sort of give you a vote of confidence on this idea for nine weeks, then you will be in the process of reallocating the money. But will it be? I guess what I'm not clear on is are, do we, when the school committee votes on a budget transfer, are we voting to approve the transfer that has already happened or voting to approve the transfer that will happen? And I'm just wondering what these dollars will start accumulating by, um, as savings and where will it go if not to pay it all? Is that's what I'm just trying to check.
Understand. And so as far as the timing is concerned and why we're not, why we're not looking at the transfers or, um, voting on the budget transfers today is because we are very much in the process of finishing up hiring and confirming and positions and, um, salaries for this upcoming year. And so that's all, that will all continue um, this week, next week, and sometimes it even continues into the first couple of weeks of the school year. And so um, because that work is still taking place, those salaries are a huge part of us making sure that each one of the lines is accurate and that it's also funded appropriately. So I need that work to kind of continue and to almost finish up that work before we can take a wholesale look at the budget and say, okay, we had some of these reductions, but we may have to potentially put it over here because this salary is a little bit higher than what we had originally put in the budget. Um, and then there are some reallocations that we currently know based off of looking at last year's actuals in the budget that was originally approved for this year. We already know of some reallocations that we need to make. Um, but it's just instead of having to vote every single meeting, line by line by line at each one of the transfers, the timing just works out well to do it with the quarter one report.
Okay. So, so these funds will actually stay where they are.
Uh, one of the, the custodians, I couldn't understand, did we already hire both custodians or they're disposed?
So we, we've posted two, one at the quality guard and one at the, uh, peers.
Okay. So if for some reason those aren't able to be known, those savings.
I mean, so it's interesting to say we're already almost, we're a month and a half into the fiscal year. We've gone without an HR director. We went a month without a, uh, assistant superintendent, gone a month without two custodians. But again, burning over to, because they've been trying to make up the shift. So and, um, every, every month that goes by, every payroll that goes by, there are accumulating, you know, good news stories for that. To offset that, we had to bring back Marty McKenna to help with re-registration, communicating with our folks. So uh, to, to the point of, is this seven seventy two clean money that we have in a banking fund that we just look at and say, wow, isn't that the, this is, it's complicated. It's not, you know, so there's some small offsets that we go in order to, to try to make sure that service delivery is happening and we're delivering the services.
You have a question to this or, or I'll take a motion? Um, okay. So the motion would be to approve the direction of the school departments, um, in terms of moving forward with these budget realignments. That's the motion you want me. Okay. So I will make a motion to, um, support the district's plan to realign the budget based on these. Uh, all in favor? Uh, that will be our recommendation and we'll sit down at full school committee tonight. Watch the recording soon. Uh, all right. That's it for FY twenty six, um, eight forty three, uh, discussion of finance report structure. This is something we've been wanting to get into a bit of like how we, uh, look at our budgets. Uh, look at the reports. Katie has shared some documents previously and we've had on the agenda for a while and not been able to really dive into it. Um, so I guess the question to the team is like, is, we're doing, I'm going to talk about kind of the process by which we, I mean, give Katie and John some feedback on the reports that they've been sharing with us and any changes or additions we want to see that have been recorded. So be clear for Katie about what she's producing and how that's, that's committee of the school. We didn't sample part of the reports more. I thought it was one of these, uh, documents, but it's not.
Um, we could potentially use that year end financial report. That, um, the year end financial report was organized, the financial piece of it, there was a memo and then there was, um, an exhibit and that is organized by class center. So that would be a good example. And then I believe there were, I provided examples from a few other communities at previous meetings too, so we can.
Yeah, but. So in the folder, I'll drop a copy for you here. Again. But it is in the eight six folder.
I think he said too, and one of our goals this year was being really proactive with our communication, not only to you all, um, and to our colleagues within the school department, but also to the community. And a piece of that was just making sure that we're posting information on, um, on the school district's website. And so I think, you know, these reports can truly act as a mechanism of a way of like communicating this information. I think there were some questions previously about like, oh, why don't we do kind of quarterly reports? And we do, and I think for us to just be able to, um, very easily point people in the direction to be able to read through them is important. So I would just say, um, just trying to tie together like our goals and having that proactive communication and is this report working for not only us, but it doesn't provide information that a community even maybe even staff would be able to read through it and have a sense of how we're doing.
That's the thing is it's, it's not written in a way that you don't want to, that's my best background to understand. I mean, I think it's very clear that, you know, especially with the year end report, where there were, um, significant overages, like explaining what they were giving, I think was helpful. Um, obviously looking not to have that be a factor this year, but anything, but I think essentially calling out any variability and explaining the why is, is helpful.
I mean, I think the sort of next qualitative quantitative approach to the report works. Ensure the quarterly reports are in a different flavor than, than your in the course. When, just a question. So your cost centers, it looks like there's, you know, about ten ish major cost centers of the schools, maybe fifteen major costs, like so the schools and then you have, you know, maybe some repair district administration, special education. At the school level, does it, are the, are the codes underneath that like more detailed, like there's staffing, office supplies? Whatever.
Yes, yes.
I think, I think looking at budget trends by cost centers. I'm understanding how money is going, but then looking at how subcategories are working across the district. Um, and I'm, yeah, so just taking salary as an obvious example. I see total, like there's salary by cost center and then there's total salary. It can also be interesting as we just, to, to look at things like depending on what the, what the data is showing, you know, total, um, total salary expenditure for certain grade levels, total salary expenditure for special education, total salary expenditure for whatever. Um, or salary expenditure, because some of these, as I understand it now, some salary costs are whether it's substitutes or district wide staff are actually assigned to a school. When in fact, there's services with district wide. And so it confuses how, how money is actually used. So, uh, getting into that, I don't, I'm not sure what the best way is to do that, but I think better understanding.
Yeah, just unpacked that for me because the salary, the salary by say grade level of school, by school, the teacher salaries are feeling consistent number, right? But the variable that we learned is something that we need to keep in eye on is the coverages in the substitute. That, that, that seems to be where that goes like this. So the kindergarten teacher stays at one twentieth of their salary. You'll see that in you know, that would be really constant. The variable of those lines, if you refer to again, is something that we're caught as well. So however that is reflected. Is that something that we all have? Very intent line, the shares as an example of a cost.
That's a great point. And is that categorized as salary or is that a separate? It is, okay.
And it is. So for those substitute expenses, it is within the cost center, uh, um, school. So it, it is broken out by school. But I think if, because that was one budget area that we have been over historically for a few different years, we could potentially create a separate cost center that was just substitute coverage, just to call it out. It would only be a salary line. Um, and then that could be substitutes, extra duties, kind of those variable lines. Um, and so that way we could see that it's just district level, but we needed to look at each one of the new budget goals. So I could, I could take those from the school centers and just create a separate cost center. In special ed has their own separate, I believe there is a separate special education cost center. Um, so we should be able to see those salaries. So those salaries are everyone district wide that, um, are, I say coded because that's, um, you know, the accounting term. Um, as a special education employee, but that includes every, all of our schools.
So that special education coded person district wide could be the speech pathologist as they call it.
Yes, correct.
That's where they separate. That's how the budget lines separate. Thank you.
So, so following up on that, similarly, the sort of where we were before, you're not going to see variability that suddenly you have to add a first grade teacher that's consistent in elementary, but within special education, based on what we're talking about before, there is the possibility for variability within that salary line item depending on students coming in for services. So is that a line item? So recognize, I guess, recognizing that within special education, that has been so variable. Is there a greater level of detail that would be helpful to look at quarterly that helps us track any of that? Quarterly that helps us track any of that. Variability, because right now it's a big, it's a salary line item, so you know, we recognize that transportation would be a piece of it, and tuition just could be a piece of it and that. So is there something within there that could be helpful to go? A little bit deeper, because right now transportation in this case is jet, they pay less transport, not special, it's not a special ed, so. Um, just knowing that that was an area that makes sense a little bit more. Is there a greater level of detail that would be helpful?
So I think for um. For the special education piece, if we start breaking it down really granular, then it becomes not cost center anymore and the report is just going to continue to expand. And so then we would want to be consistent with the other areas. But what we can do or what I can do is I think the memo section sometimes is is truly like, that's the important piece.
Right.
If it was just this cost center report, I could just send this report out at whatever frequency. And I don't know if it was, unless you have like kind of this context and the um. The memo portion of it to explain it, then we really try to make the report kind of meaningful. And so I think if there are any areas where we're experiencing an overage, we could reference it.
Yeah.
In the memo portion, and then we should be able to see a kind of tracking in the report as well um. But certainly as like as the year progresses, if there's areas that there's specific lines that were like, oh, more consistently totally progress, then we can. Potentially talk about modifying kind of that financial piece of the report too.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, and I don't want to get in the weeds of it, I just think is there a way to? Keep um. Be aware, like have an eye on recognizing that of all the areas, that's probably the one that was variability.
So one of the things that they can offer from a, from a in district special education view. That in this scenario you provided Amanda, so say we do have an uptick of students who need a certain service delivery estimate, something happened, folks come in. And that, that speech pathologist that we just approved as a point five, that case load goes up, we would present to you that we were increasing. That point five to a point six, we'd have to let the school committee know that we're doing that, because we're adding staff, right, we're adding a point six of that day. And then that's, that's how we could capture that in summary. That we, we have an added need, we're going to need to be able to do this, so that that would be part of a discussion that we could have. Um, that's part of that, that's where that would fit into, and we would say it out loud. Uh, the, the art of district work and transportation in the absence of that is, is a, is a bigger conversation, that's, that's more. For non-indistinct folks, the industrial folks think that service delivery and those expenses, we, we absorb pretty well within what we have staff. But if we have to increase it, then it should be recognized.
And that's where I think we haven't necessarily. Of recognizing if we have to increase somebody, right?
Actually be better for you, meaning in the future that will be very good for you.
Um, one of the big goals of. These reductions is to help replenish the funding funds. Is there movement within the revolving funds on quarterly basis that is worth looking at? And should that be included?
Um, I believe so, you scrolled down, I think it was paid by. So it's a different format, because it's not necessarily broken down by cost center, these are just, this is the full list of revolving accounts. For this whole department.
I think you typically provide this on a quarterly basis.
We have not, yep, so we can definitely.
I don't even know that we need to see this full table every quarter, if we do great, it could also just be, you could have like. A paragraph in the memo that's just like. Talking about where. You know, I don't, I don't know, I might be interested in whether we don't talk about that, like, are there? Are, do we have specific replenishment goals for some of these funds this year, or are we just going to be opportunistic about it? And then if in the um memo, you just talked about progress towards replenishment. And then.
We talked about that in our last video, I think it's a great idea to actually have a conversation this fall about what those goals should be. And to get the multi-year work of getting to whether the balances are sufficient. Um, just as an example, when you look at community schools, it's the fourth line down. Um, revenue in during the twenty four, twenty five year was two million one. Revenue out in that same year was two point nine. So I think there's a uh. An understanding from the community that might not be a hundred percent accurate, that there's so much money in the revolving account for the community schools, why can't we do more? Why can't we scale up so easily? Uh, scaling up the community schools is not, is not only about money, that's one factor, it's space. It's safety, it's appropriate staffing levels, it's program quality. So there's a lot to it, and I think that when people see a balance of nine hundred and forty three thousand dollars, they say, why can't we do more? We're actually back, we're upside down right now, so there will be discussion this year to talk about whether or not. These six dollars and forty eight cents an hour per child that they pay may need to go up to seven dollars an hour. Child in order to make that solvent, that has to be a, it doesn't have to be a generating positive revenue, it needs to be at least even. You know, we're not making money yet, but we're, we're always trying to provide an appropriate balance, so. That's one example of goals, and I think Marky brought that up, of actually trying to put some policy maybe in place so we can bring it to the. When we go to that bigger conversation about that, like twenty seven, that we use those policies, those goal, and those levers to justify how we're presenting a budget. Which is a great idea.
Always worth, I've never heard. The hourly breakdown, I mean, um.
It's like seven dollars.
I feel very helpful, the message.
Um, yeah, I mean, I generally agree with the, since guys that like having some additional breakdown in the salary to like to break out. Backends or substitute coverage from addition salary. I think would be helpful, especially given kind of the issues we've seen the last couple of years with the overage in the places. Um, the other thing I think is really helpful with salary is like an FTE. Versus actual some type thing, I know again, especially special education of their initial. Decided services needed, that, that can change, but I think that's been a thing that has changed and has hurt us uh. But just because obviously there are costs to see within, and said earlier, we have quite that flexibility within the budget in order to. Assume there was a cost of going over budget, so. I think having a visual in terms of that of how we're doing around FTE and if we're above. How we are feeling about that and adjusting for that, but I don't know how we think that is. Other thing I'd say is like. I don't know if for me or at our level, and I remember seeing like the difference between Collycott, Cunningham, Glover, Tucker. Is a level of, like, the level of conversation. Need to have versus. School staff or elementary versus middle and high school um. That's just a, a level of detail, I think actually is a place where maybe we're, we're too low.
Say that again, I'm not sure.
Just again, if we're thinking about like there, I think there are some levels within this that are too high, so again, like salary is just, I think, too broad a number, I think getting a little more detail, as we talked about, would be helpful. I think in other ways, like. Looking at it on a school by school level. Might be too low, given I think what you made, which is that, and that came up here in the sub-stud, but the. Sub-coverage was assigned to Collycott, so Collycott looked over, but actually that's not how y'all look at it, y'all look at it across the elementary schools, so if you're looking at it across the elementary schools. I don't think we need to look at it at like a Glover Tucker thing, so um, so that's just a place where again, I think it might be. I know those are your cost centers as you're talking to principals and things, but we're not having conversations directly with principals, so that might be a. A level too much. Um, for the general expenses, I don't know if there's any further breakdown that is helpful, I think. That's obviously. Yeah, classroom supply, instructional supplies, there's like operating supplies or things like, but I'm not sure how much you break it down, those are obviously pretty small. I do agree, Amanda, I think with your point of. The special education, if the general expense there is something we can. You know, break down to say, hey, you know, here's our projected out of district placement costs, or like, again, what are the kind of top couple things that have been a concern over the last couple of years and then the rest? Remaining or miscellaneous general expenses.
So one of the ways that we would break it down, kind of like in the financial system and the way that the state has actually structured it. Um, so that all the school departments are kind of reporting our information in a. In a consistent fashion is for salaries, there's three major categories on salaries. And similarly for that was expensive, there's three major categories. All of these expenses are categorized in, in one of the things, so it would be. For this report, just under salary, we could be, we could put the three major categories and show you the summary for each. What the categories represent is, it's at a high level, but it is just one, two, and three for salaries, and it's, one is your licensed. Teaching staff, two is your administrative and support staff. And three is your non-licensed educational support staff, so that would be your instructional assistance. And also our technology support staff would be in the three category, and so. I could break down that information very easily, adding in those layers, I just don't know, and that's like kind of providing the context. That you're looking for, because it wouldn't, for general expenses, it's four, five, and six, it's um. Contracted services, supplies, materials, and then other, it's just kind of a broad bucket. Um, so it's not going to tell you transportation. Uh, it's not going to, I mean, you know, supplies um would just be our general school supplies, but I, I don't know that it's providing the context, but. That is. To be able to expand it in that way and categorize it, that is kind of functionality that. Already exists and there's a mechanism to do it, I just don't know that it's really going to like. Provide that context of those areas where we're like, oh, that's typically in your concern.
So I guess. Do you have that a little bit, you know, like if you talked about the um. Administrative support staff and IAs, so this is. Asking the question of recognizing, things have been put in place so that. Those numbers don't change without approval. Help, but if you think about like. What we saw historically, those two lines, like I think if you look at IAs and you look at some of those, those grew. But we, but if we're looking at just that top salary line number, we don't know where they were growing, so to your point before, like sub-coverage was in that, but if. Through the year. Four IAs were hired, but there's no um. We don't have a lens into that, but we see that number growing, if we saw those two. Those, if you saw that breakout, then you would see that that's where it's going, because that top one, that first one, in all likelihood, wouldn't change, because it's. But those other two is where you might see the change, and I think it's just us having that. Lens into that would be. Would, could be helpful if, if we're looking for more detail. Do you know what I mean? Because that's where.
Kind of what I was thinking about, like the FTE, like would the FTE actually be? More helpful than. Salary number, it's again. You brought people in who actually are under salary, then the first they're left, then from the budget, and you're going to see some savings there, but one person slightly over, like. You'd be somewhat above it. But like those things hopefully wash out across the district um. The growth in the FTEs might, might be the piece, but I don't know how easy it is to incorporate FTEs within these reports and so that's.
So I'm trying to balance the, the um. The process piece for Katie to be able to provide.
Right.
The most um. Clear detail in a way that's universal enough to get through the Q one, Q two, Q three, so it's enough detail, but. It also has a systematic approach that's, that's achievable, and also reports back to the state, and we all have to kind of organize. Katie has a way of doing that, that's pretty centralized through her association, which doesn't work. And then the second, the, the other side of that is. The, the thing that I was just writing down is, what have been the recent cost drivers of the district? That we have been concerned about because we've been over it. You know, what, what are the things that we're all worried about, like what gets us up at night, so, and how do we want to keep track of that? And right now. Thinking about how FY twenty five ended, it was subs coverage. It was um. Uh, out of district tuitions, contracted services, special education, special education, transportation, P U D T. Right, so, because that's where the variability has been, right, so. Maybe Katie and I think about how do we, because we, we want to keep track of that as well, we have, we have a shared interest in making sure. That our expenses are being monitored in a way and discussed, you know, every other week. We'll be meeting with Danielle every other week to go over the bottom half of that. Those four things, you know, where are we, just going on, so. We'll think about how we can reflect that, so we can all together monitor the ups and downs of that, and if there's a point where we need to put up a red flag of. We're a little worried about this line, we're okay everywhere else, it's not a problem at the end of the year. But this is how this cost driver is behaving this year, and we want to just be. Clear about how we're going to try to work through that. Accompany for that. So, does that sound the same, Katie?
It is, and I think, I think a key to that too is, when we're having those conversations, it's having those conversations and what is impact for twenty six? Then what is the impact for twenty seven, so, so we, so we'll be talking about it a lot, because it's not just going to be something that we're tracking. Through the administration of this year's budget, it's something that we will have to really take into consideration when we're talking about building FY twenty seven.
Can, can I foreshadow something for everybody, so with that thought? We're going to work hard to, since two big things that we're going to get the principals to get working on as soon as we open school. And they absorb all these reductions and they welcome one thousand children next week uh is negotiation prep. In budget. When we start talking about budget realigning and making it by twenty seven, the first year of the reset, after this is the reset year, then the first year to reset. We could reset the whole thing, come up with a beautiful plan, tighten it all up, maybe redirect some positions on the service delivery, maybe save a couple of positions, whatever that is. But as we're doing that between October, November, December, the school world is moving. The variables are coming in and out. The unit D might go down by two or up by three. The PT or OT person might go from a point five to a point four to a point seven. Somewhere in the spring, after we kind of reset the budget and get ready to be proud of how we presented for FY twenty seven, get ready to. We need to stop somewhere. In the spring of that, of twenty six to say. This was a perfect plan, but now the cost centers or the cost lines. Had to adapt to meet the needs of the children this year, so we need to reflect that before we cement. That budget for FY twenty seven, because otherwise you're already starting at a deficit, or you're already starting with a budget that you're presenting and approving at town meeting. That's not, it's all, it's, it's out of whack, so you, you need to capture that last number as best you can. And then make projections for what may happen in FY twenty seven that you don't know about, because you remember that, that, that'll be the comment, why didn't you think about that last year? Right, why didn't you accommodate for that in April if that student moved in or that thing happened? So we're, we'll build this as best we can, but it's going to be a ninety five percent cooked, cooked thing, and then we'll, we have to adjust, and so we should prepare the market committee for that. And the select one for that, then when we present to this and we're working through this through the fall and winter months and all agreeing that the revenue is what it is, or they're out here. We may take, we, we may need to make some changes in order to accurately, to the moment that we can, in the budget process, most accurately reflect what I mean, so. A lot of places don't do that, and then what happens is that when you add that point five and that point two over the course of that year to make things work for kids. You're already, you're already over your FTE account when you start the year. And that, that recognition of happening, having those things. Communicated clearly during the year, but then having them reflected after you set the budget in January and then we start to shop it around, we have to then reset it again. If that makes sense, because that's really where a lot of things fall. In fiscal budgets for municipalities, because it's just so much happening at schools, still asking school.
So that's the Q three report. Can cert, can, can support that. Um, sort of final piece of information, I'm speaking as a not finance committee person, so I totally defer to all of you. As you figure out how this makes most sense, but to me. Like, especially for Q one, Q two, like, as long as we're in budget. Like on track, more or less. That like it seems makes sense to focus the information on those places that for whatever reasons. Are. Areas of concern or requiring attention, right, I mean. That's one of the main needs for these reports, right, it's like status updates. And so even if, and that may not be reflected in the table, but in the body of the memo. Like. That's where you can flag, and maybe it's one of those same drivers that kept us up at like night last year. Maybe something else will come up and become an issue that you're tracking and needing to address. But. Like that's. That might just. Mean you're pulling that detail into the memo portion to explain. Like what this report is showing us. But I really reinforce. The concept of not creating more work for you. For the purpose of track of demonstrating that we're on track. In the majority of the of the lines, like that seems like not the best use of your time.
We'll be mindful of the time, so I think we'll, we can pause the conversation here and keep talking about, we obviously have a little quarter one report. So moving us down, um. Townwide Finance Committee meeting, we're voting on that tonight, some placements um. Have a discussion, full school committee, as who are the members, who we think the members actually be, they have a school committee. Have you heard anything about the finance consultants?
Yes, so we we had a kickoff meeting maybe a couple weeks ago. And then I met with the consultant individually to talk about the school department. And talk about, um, they had some bolded items that they had. Um, presented to us during our kickoff meeting, and so I was able to just provide them with some information. Um, they had some questions for us, so just going to chat to them about my experience and some the work that we've done. Um, since I started last year, so um I probably spent about two hours. With the team, there were two individuals, so it's a pretty good. Good conversation.
What is third to level, is it like a report and several additions? Yeah, that's my understanding from the.
The first meeting was Katie and I with members of Nick and Alon's team. And then now they're going to.
Uh, great, you know, this one keeps updating us. We are going to defer meeting minutes, kind of the those together, uh, discussion next meeting date, we have nine, three. Um, any particular agenda items that. Let's want to apply that. So Katie, John, I'll chat beforehand just to confirm, we will continue the financial board structure conversation. So the other thing, so we have many we need to. Um, great, once, then I will take a motion to adjourn. That's our second, second, all in favor? Thank you so much.